Right, commissioners, your meeting is live.
Good morning, welcome to the October 2nd meeting. That's as Riley County Commission, read there. Please stand and join us, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm glad that we have a studio of the land of the United States as America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I'll tell them.
Yeah, it's not an executive session, so that's, that's good news. Jacob Hansen, Riley County Councilor, asking the board to amend the agenda to remove or replace my administrative time at 10:15 with a session for the Health Department, Brittany, with the Budget and Finance Office, and then Elizabeth with HR to go over WIC concerns and the federal government.
So it isn't an executive session? No?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably better talk about it.
Probably.
Better hold their own minutes.
Do we have consensus to amend the agenda?
You need to make probably a motion on this, although I'd make a motion that we amend the agenda and replace the 10:15 administrative work session time with an update that the Riley County Health Department and the WIC department.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to change, to remove the administrative work sessions from Jacob Hansen and change to the WIC discussion, all in favor?
Okay, good morning commissioners, my name is Jared Tremblay, I'm with the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization. I just wanted to stop by today to touch on two topics, number one, we kicked off the Big Blue River Second Connection Cost Benefit Study, AKA the Different Bridge Studies, so that has kicked off. It should wrap up in May of 2026. The other thing I wanted to note was that we have our long-range transportation plan called Connect 2050. We're wrapping that up, and we are hosting a series of open houses. And so I brought some flyers for you, we have one in Manhattan. And then also with that, we're trying something new, in addition to these formal meetings, we're also trying Transportation Trivia Night, if you're out in Manhattan on November 13th, we'll be hosting Trivia Night. So we're just looking to invite you to these formal events we'll be presenting.
Like Transportation Trivia, huh?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Ah, good fun there.
Good morning commissioners, John Ellerman, Public Works. And after the public notice that we'll do in public our press conference next week, but structure replacement project on Blue River Hills Road will begin on October 14th. Project is located approximately 1.3 miles north of Turtle Creek Bottle Bar. The River Hills will be closed through traffic from Turtle Creek to Stockdale Park. This project expected to be completed by October 31st, weather permitting. They're gonna do some work on that low water crossing down there at the lake. And then the second thing I have is, I wanted to let you know that our competitors that went to the National Snow Rodeo, we, they took, Albert and Eric took second place out of 49 competitors in the truck competition. Let's see what we also, we got Eric took third place in the skid steer, and that was out of 80, 83 competitors. And let's see, the motor grader competition, Albert took eighth, Eric took 15th. 39. And I think the last one in the loader competition, well actually loader, with 43. And Albert was 58 out of 70, 80, 77. So they did really pretty well, you know, a couple belt buckles and.
Any free equipment?
Not quite, not quite, no. But thank you. Anyone else? When the commission comments?
Okay, well, Tuesday afternoon, I attended the monthly Board of Directors meeting of Pontiff Mental Health via Zoom. Had a pre-meeting of the Finance Oversight Committee, which I'm also a member of, discussed the financials of the agency through August. Items of discussion at the meeting included some introductions of some new members of staff, Chief Finance Officer report from Lindsay Miller, why I wouldn't even have a spell better, sorry about that Cindy, as well as Finance Oversight Committee report, Chief Executive Officer report by Michael Reskella, Marketing Development report by Diane Tendricks Torben. And we finished the meeting with two executive sessions on non-직원 personnel. And we'll be glad to know that I've got all that stored away and came to use on Tuesday afternoon, by the way. So wasted a lot of time and energy on that one, I suppose. Wednesday morning, I attended the Advantage Manhattan Investors Breakfast at the Hilton Garden End. We heard from Darren Sol from the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce of what's taking place here regionally over the summer and fall. Guest speaker was Jeremy Hill from the Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City. I think most of us knew Jeremy from his work in Economic Development at Wichita State University, but obviously he's made quite the jump from Wichita State to the Federal Reserve, so. He gave a good presentation back in 2019 at KAC, I do remember that. So he discussed, he gave some data on economic climate of the state and our region here locally. It was pretty, pretty informative, to be honest with you. Wednesday afternoon, attended the October Military Relations luncheon at the DoubleTree at the Hilton. Got an update on local upcoming military events, including the annual AUSA Conference that'll be taking place in Washington DC. I'll be joining everybody at that particular conference here in two weeks. And of course, the Appide Festival, which takes place on Fort Riley, and that slated currently, with the current climate, that could possibly change on Saturday, October 18th, on post from nine to four with various games, events, and activities taking place up on the installation. Our guest speaker was United States Congressman from the 2nd District Derek Schmidt, who had to join us via Zoom to, to the current conditions of Washington DC. Congressman discussed the current government shutdown, serving on the Armed Services Committee and helping develop the latest National Defense Authorization Act and discussed issues greatly impacting service members, veterans, as well as Fort Riley and the area National Guard. Very well attended, even though the congressman was supposed to be in person and ended up being Zoomed, it all worked out pretty well. I did also learn late last evening that we have been awarded the Home in the Heartland Grant through Make My Move, and the full amount's of $187,084. There'll be more details coming as how those dollars are going to be dispersed and how the program is going to work. So, and I did have a talk last night with Ben Ledo from Make My Move, and those details will be coming, emails being passed around, apparently it went to Allison, got to Chamber, I'm not exactly for sure why or how. I'm more used to working with Commerce on these things at the state level and not Treasury, so it's a different process, so just be patient. So I spent most of the rest of the week working, getting caught up ahead of several projects at work, as October's gonna be a very, very busy month, with travel and other events. And walked outside this morning, the first thing I saw was a full arching rainbow this morning, yeah. First thing I saw walking outside, I was like, well, either today's gonna be a really good day or something really serious is gonna happen, I just don't know yet, so it's too early to know. It was, it was sprinkling pretty good, I wouldn't say it was raining, but obviously it was sprinkling good enough that caused the full arching rainbow, I was like, whoa, I don't see those very often. Then the really mysterious double arching rainbow, so I needed to rain a little bit more, but it didn't, so anyway, that's all I've got.
Well, let's see, Monday I did hear from the, well, the Eggvilles about the Street Committee had met with RCPD, and apparently they have, they have, we're not gonna do road restrictions except on game weekends, big game weekends, and, or big events. So they've come to at least a tentative agreement, so, so we'll get more reports soon. A lot more to be, Tuesday had a PT session, very good advice scheduled every end of week, and then once a month. Also, that Tuesday met with Laura Muneoral of Republic Works, which looked at carpets, chair, desk, colors of our commission chambers, which are, we had yesterday of the commission chambers, and came to a consensus on what we all liked. That included Corey Meyer and John Ellerman, two of us, and the provider from Salina. Anyway, we, it's in the bag, so if you want to check, I have some tables there, so. Let's see, then, well, Wednesday morning, I, I worked on revising documents or documents for today's meeting, the agenda. Oh yeah, on Tuesday also met with the head counselor and commandant to develop a deadline for the easements, so we get up to bid this fall. So we set the deadline for the easements for people for October 10th. So hopefully, I'm glad he was gonna get a, get a letter out, registered mail to get have it signed. Those are a few permanent easements, I don't care how they're going, but they should be signed soon, hopefully. Anyway, Wednesday night, I went to bell practice, bell choir practice. And I just wanted to let you know, I'm not planning to be here next Thursday. And then I, my daughter's subject to town, so I'm, I will get a long phone email.
Yeah, speaking of Thursdays off, I won't be here on the 16th either.
I didn't have anything going on, I didn't go by, took some cleaning out places and took some stuff out the household, had a swish. Then also picked up some paint. After, so. Yeah, I'll go buy my hands. Yeah, we can go ahead.
Sorry, I have to make a motion to approve the agreements, services with Big Lakes Development Center Incorporated for 2026.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agreement for services with Big Lakes Development Center for 2026, all in favor?
Aye.
That problems, some of these.
Thanks to the group and letter of support for the West development.
May I make a motion to approve the signing of the letter of support for Big Lakes Development Center with $10,000 KDO payment?
Well, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve signing the letter of support for Big Lakes Development Center for a KDOT grant submission, all in favor?
Aye.
To approve the highway use permit granting SDT Solutions LLC permission to complete work as outlined in the permit.
I make a motion to approve the highway use permit granting SDT Solutions LLC permission to complete work as outlined in the permit.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the highway use permit granting SDT Solutions LLC permission to complete work as outlined in the permit, all in favor?
Aye.
Using us a township board for the cereal beverage licenses for St. Phil.
And I would make a motion to accept and sign the notice to the township board for the cereal beverage license on behalf of St. Phil.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept and sign the notice to the township, notice to the township board for the cereal beverage license. We have a St. Phil law in favor.
And to approve the tax rule correction.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax rule corrections as listed.
All right, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the tax rule correction as presented, all in favor?
Our agenda is in wage forms for our remaining hire as a meat company that is ready to pay any higher as a specialist.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the requested position actions.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the requested position actions, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payment.
On second.
Been moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any changes to the meeting minutes? Or is it?
I'll make a motion that we approved the minutes as written from the September 29th meeting of the Riley County Commission.
On second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the September 29th meeting as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah, 27, I mean, I'm just saying, let me see, is that where you're at in place?
Yes.
No, well, 16, yeah.
Yeah, I think your idea about meeting is a good one, do you see?
Well, I don't care. Why is it making me feel like this? There's a meaning, I don't understand. You don't actually. Yeah, that's a lot. I don't care, you know, the term. The ECL.
Yeah, actually, 16th is city counting. Because there's gonna be a good majority of us that are gonna be in Kansas City for the Chamber of Training.
It's also. Well, they must not have the Chamber of Training.
I know. Policy breakfast. There's a contingency of us that are going to DC for AUSA, and we're coming right back and going to Kansas City for the board retreat. Okay.
All right, good morning, Commissioners, Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director, um, here with our monthly update for, um, September, so looking back, you know, this is what we strive to provide for Riley County, um, helping you manage people, policies, and processes. And so in doing so, we always like to hit our current numbers, so our current headcount, uh, for our regular employees sits at two eighty-nine for this month, seasonals three thirty-eight. Um, you can see we had two hires and six separations over the month, um, and some of those, the way they hit, they actually, uh, we were tracking and processing their separations a month before, but they're formally, uh, happened in September. Um, in our, um, seasonal, you know, you've got a lot more activity going on there, so you've got thirty-five new hires and sixty-one separations, so the vast majority are going to be elections, but we also have had a lot of movement in our volunteer fire, um, and so, and truthfully, a lot of those hires are also volunteer fire, so, uh, but they've also been cleaning up some of their records as they go. Uh, the turnover rate for this month, and that does remove our retirements, and it is a, it's a moving twelve-month calendar, is a little bit higher than we were at last month, which would include, you know, not only September of twenty-five, but then it would have taken off August of twenty-four, so just kind of a moving twelve-month thing to keep a track on. Um, our average tenure is, is staying about the same, um, it's less than it was a couple of years ago, as we all know, we lost quite a few long-term employees, um, just through attrition and retirement, uh, we do have currently eight openings, which is a little bit high for us, um, but we're trying to work through those as we go. Anything on those question, on those numbers? Um, so you guys are tracking that, uh, the Highly Effective Managers Program, just as an updated, is starting this month, we do have twelve people registered, and that's representing seven different departments, um, so I'm excited for that to, to happen, we are going to continue, your original direction was to meet together in a group setting so that those supervisors could network internally, but also solve their problems together, so we're going to continue with that model, um, but this, so last year I participated as HR, this year Michelle Reed will be participating as HR, so that we also, um, you know, kind of share that knowledge and have that spread out, uh, so I'm excited for that and for her to do that as well. Um, our onboarding committee, which Michelle leads, is, uh, implementing Phase Two, so far has been going smoothly, um, they continue to meet as a work group to make sure that they can address any issues which represent several departments. Um, so hopefully we can, can really see an impact maybe on our tenure and our retention with that program. We, um, I mentioned to you last month about a Certified Public Manager course, um, just mentioned to you that Lori Muir, uh, David Adams, were discussing this with KU who, who, uh, who hosts the class, so no, sorry about that, but no bias there, um, so they, what the idea would be, uh, and Lori's going to present all the details to this, uh, to you on Monday to see if you support or not, but the idea would be that KU would host their program here, which they do around the state, um, communities host them, uh, depending if there's enough interest, and so if, if we host and we get enough interest, we actually get one free, um, participation, which is a thirty-nine-hundred-dollar value, um, so Lori did present to the department heads yesterday. I thought, at that time before she presented, I thought there were three potential interests internally, but there's actually five, she has five already put together, and then once we kind of, if you all are supporting of hosting it, um, which is not, no, um, financial requirement except snacks, we would have to provide snacks and drinks on site, um, it is two days a month for twelve months. And, um, we'll see, well, she'll give you more details in the cost and kind of the breakdown, but we need to have fifteen to twenty-five participants, so she would then spread this out to the other municipalities in the areas to see who else we could get to participate and support the class. Um, I did, uh, have a few more discussions with M A T C, I work with David Umanzor there, and, um, he, so I just met with him this last week, and he kind of put together an idea, instead of a registered apprenticeship, a regional certification for some of our programs like building maintenance, uh, or general maintenance, and those kinds of things that kind of hit on a bit of all their programs, but not specialized in any one program, um, he is actually going to come and present that idea, that proposal to you on the sixteenth, um, as a type of partnership, it wouldn't be, in my mind, we don't have enough positions to say, yeah, let's have a design program just for Riley County, but if we got several employers at the table that had that same need for general maintenance, or, you know, maybe expand other programs, um, they could create a credentialing program that would allow someone to work and gain the knowledge, so he's going to come, um, you know, he's really the expert on how those work, so he's going to come and present to you on the sixteenth so that you can understand what the, um, what the program would entail. Uh, sorry, any questions on any of those things, I know those are all new ideas, but not asking for you to approve or disapprove, just things that we've been collaboratively working on. Okay. All right, so some of the numbers, um, you know, I always like to put a graphic in there to just give you an idea of what kind of is happening through the HR process, so this is, we always talk about how many applications we've processed in a month, but this kind of gives you a breakdown of where they're coming from, um, and, you know, it's, it's maybe only into HR nerds, it's interesting to see, but a vast majority are coming from Indeed.com, um, you can also see we get picked up on ZipRecruiter, and then some of these other sources, um, we actually do advertise on Indeed, but we end the advertise on Kansas Works, so those two places, we physically, you know, manually go up and post our jobs, and the rest of those are all aggregates, they go out and they kind of troll the internet and see these and grab them, um, but people are finding jobs in that, job sources in that way, so. So in September, I guess it's kind of got off the edge there, uh, in September, our average time to fill is sixteen, and I do like that to be right around that two-week mark, um, or ideally less, but so I think we're, we're doing okay there, sometimes we get a little long on certain positions, and it's just staff time or application pool, but, um, like I said, we reviewed two hundred and fifty-seven applications, um, we held, uh, fourteen interviews during the month, and we had four onboarding events, um, and employee relations, meaning when we might, um, or in mentoring, we're working with either the department head supervisor to really figure out, you know, just specific employee problems, um, compliance events, aid events, and, um, we did update two P Ds, um, during the month. So if these are, uh, you know, I've kind of been moving to this kind of a format, but if these are things that you are interested in knowing about HR, that's great, if you think there's some other, you know, there's so many metrics out there, so if you think there's some other metric that you'd be interested in knowing, you know, always let me know. Um, all right, so everyone's favorite time of the year. We know what's coming, right? Greg shaking his head, but, um, so it, performance evaluations, so, uh, we are working on the, the employee performance evaluations, I have a a little work group of four department heads trying to just not recreate the wheel, use the same evaluation format we did last year, but tweak the things that didn't work, that either seemed overlapping or didn't make sense to employees, um, so I, I think that's, uh, it's been really good, they've given really good input, and we'll be able to kind of just explain it better, so employees understand how to self-rate themselves and supervisors understand, um, we're hoping to have them out by November first, the employee performance evaluations are all due back from the employee, the supervisor, and the department head on December fifth, um, and that's in order so that we can process twenty-twenty-six, um, pay rates before December twenty-fifth, which is our last day of the payroll year. Um, Michelle coordinated and held two benefits fairs, um, for open enrollment, which we are in, and I've got another slide on, um, so the, she had these on two separate locations, and she had about a hundred and twenty attendees. There were approximately a hundred people in person, and then she also does, um, does it live, I don't know if you use Teams or Zoom. Teams, yeah, and so she had twenty attendees on Teams, and she also records this, and it's available for anyone who wasn't able to make it on our shared drive, um, and I have it on the next slide, but benefits, open enrollment starts yesterday, started yesterday, and every single employee, we talked to the department heads, has to go in and either enroll or deny their benefits, um, and that's, it was something we can't change, so it is the way it is, um, they unfortunately also have to go to at least two sites because we have state benefits who do not merge or sync with anyone else, and we have athletic voluntary benefits, um, which does, it would, it will merge into Paylocity for us, but they're going to have to do those on two places, um, and then Michelle's been sending a ton of emails, I'm sure you, you've seen them, but she's going to continue, and we've asked all the department heads to make sure that all their employees, um, get enrolled, one of the things I mentioned to remind the department heads is that stable employees need health insurance, and so if we want to keep our workforce stable and not worried about financial costs or health, and health, um, emergencies, one of the things they need, um, is to have good health benefits, so we want to make sure that we don't miss somebody, fall through the crack, and then end up, um, not having benefits, because after that deadline, they cannot come in and re-enroll at any point unless they have a major life change. Um, one of the two, one of the things we talked about previously is we did implement pre-hire aptitude tests, um, which is a, a tool for the department heads to use, it's a hiring resource, um, it's a company that is very economical, six dollars per test, the department heads decide which test they would like the candidate to take depending on the skill set of the job, and it might be a different test for different jobs within their departments, um, and so we've, uh, used those in, in, uh, well, we've had three of departments evaluate, and, um, one department put them into place, and we're thinking the others will as well as they start to fill. And then, you know, Greg knows, you all know, we did the KAC Year Service Recognition last month for those odd years. All right, so this is just a little bit more, I think I touched on all of this, and, um, we kind of jumped to it, but, um, this is the benefit, open enrollment time period. Um, and Michelle did put out, there are some changes to rates, uh, which is nationwide, you guys have probably heard about that, I think the average nationwide is fifteen percent, and we're under that, so, um, and some of our, like, dental continues to be no cost for the employee, so, um, I think it always hurts when rates go up, but they are going up across the board, and I think it's being controlled fairly well at the state level. Um, we are having upcoming changes to Paylocity, I mentioned this last month, it'll be effective October fifteenth, really, it's the dashboard and the user experience, um, so department heads, uh, are aware of this, um, we think it's going to be actually a little easier for the department heads with the new look, it's a little bit more intuitive, it incorporates AI, which we'll see if that's good or bad. Um, and then, you know, we've all, we've already talked about this, we've got that updated travel study policy, I did present the new policy, which you all received last month, to the department heads, and they supported the new version of the policy to come to you, so they'll be, well, excuse me, they supported voting on it at the next meeting, so we have to have that kind of setup, and then, um, if they vote yes, uh, that they support that, then it'll come to you to make a decision on, you know, anything you'd like to tweak, and whether you want to absolute, approve it or not. And I think that's everything on mine. Any questions or anything I didn't cover that you're interested about with personnel or staffing? Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, Mike Bowler with the Riley County Noxious Weed Household Hazardous Waste. I will talk over the ceiling fans, they kind of put me to sleep in the back row here this morning, kind of quiet in this room. So, uh, on the noxious weed side, we have completed our, uh, fall solid spring on sections two and three of the county, and it is all hands on deck now for our third round of mowing. It's the time of year where my phone rings, and maybe yours does occasionally, about when is the grass going to get mowed alongside the front of the road, so we are deep into their third round of mowing, we're about thirty percent complete. Uh, of course, we do this to help, uh, control the chemical brush control and then snow drifting problems, and it's just, uh, it's a part of road maintenance, is the reason why we mow those out. Um, we continue to be a bit of ahead of a schedule, mowing this year, pretty happy about that. And as a reminder, we do mow out on the third round all the way to the fence line, two or three passes, so it does take a little more time, and then, of course, we run into uh, deer antlers, and we've managed to destroy one tire so far this year, and, uh, the company that we deal with, I have to give them a shout out, they're out of Blaine, uh, they're a smaller company, and their service is above and beyond, uh, we had a tire blowout, and they came in on Saturday to replace the tire, and the gentleman didn't realize we left the gate unlocked, and so he climbed over a six-foot gate, he deadlifted a four-hundred-pound tractor tire six feet off the ground, threw it on the other side of the fence, and then went out on the weekend on Saturday to replace the tire, so talk about service above and beyond, and when I meet him, I will personally be buying him a, a lunch meal, that's, we're very grateful that he got our tractor up and running again, and I, I don't know how he physically was able to do it, but he's clearly a bigger man than I am, so, uh, appreciate that.
Strong, for sure.
Oh. I couldn't barely roll the tire, let alone deadlift it six feet off the ground.
Four state farm, so if there are any, you should.
Yeah, it was exactly, exactly like that. So, uh, this year, I think that, uh, you've heard me mention the word ceriza lespedezza many times, I don't know that I've ever showed a photograph of that plant before. Uh, we have had a bit of an influx of that plant this year, um, seems to be a little bit more of it down in South County, I've delivered multiple notifications to property owners down there, and really starting an education program, I've got a, uh, a lot of cooperation, there's a few landowners, I'm still trying to push in that right direction to get that taken care of. But in this photograph, you can see on the left, it's a little more close-up, ceriza is more of a bushy-style plant, and then on the, uh, right is just the beginning of an infestation. And ceriza can, uh, can create what we call a monoculture, it's aleopathic, so it will kill everything that's around it, and it can really take over a pasture, hence the reason why it's a noxious weed, um, and why property owners really need to take it seriously, and I've had a lot of adjacent property owners that have this coming into their pasture, and they contact me, a lot of times it's way back where I would have never seen it if I'm out walking fields, and so, uh, we still can treat this plant, this, uh, infestation, we have a very cheap chemical to do it, it only costs about a dollar eighty an acre to treat it, so you can't get any more tr- uh, more cheap than that, and so I just kind of wanted to show the Commissioners what ceriza lespedezza looks like, and and what we got going on in that regard. On the HHW side, uh, we will be doing another Howie's Recycling, it's always the second Saturday of the month, and that puts us on Saturday, October eleventh, this year, from eight to noon. Um, again, this is a wildly popular, um, it's almost getting to be a community event, we will serve between sixty and eighty people in that four-hour timeframe, uh, and it continues to grow, so lots of positive feedback about doing that, about having that, uh, recycle truck down there. And then, of course, we always have latex paint to give away, I know Commissioner, you were out the other day, got some latex paint, uh, funny story on that, I had been digging through the drawers, cleaning out the stuff, and I had a slide projector that I was trying to look at some old photographs, and when we first started building the building out there, and I literally said to myself, gee, I hope the Commissioner doesn't show up in the middle of this, and then one did, so. Right in the middle of tearing the office apart and watching slides on the side of the wall. But it's a great reminder that we do have, uh, recycled products beyond latex paint out there, and that is something that we get tremendous. And that is something that we get tremendous positive feedback on. One of these days I need to start doing a Facebook thumbs up or something on that because everybody's like, oh, this is just great. So I'm glad you were able to find some paint for you. We do have several tours coming up at the HHW. We've got the garden tour, actually this afternoon, I think at 1:30. A garden tour comes out there. And then the LEPC will be coming out there next month, I guess, or this month, one of those months. To do a tour as well. We often have many tours coming through there and we're always happy to show off what the county has and what we've done for ourselves. As a reminder, we are the first purpose built HHW facility in the state of Kansas. We have the commissioners that look for you to thank for that, to see the vision forward and the need for it. So we're the first in Kansas to have that. Um, we are closely working with KDHE to address an issue. And that issue is recently, we've all seen these signs that say, hey, we'll haul your junk for you. And we're getting into a situation where people are picking up people's HHW, charging them to haul it, maybe even charging them for the disposal of it. And then bringing it out to our facility under the premise that this is a free service for taxpayers of the county. Well, it is until you pick it up as your business and the KDHE has agreed that that then becomes business waste. So we're working through exactly how that's going to work. But I've gotten some phone calls from some upset property owners that paid somebody to haul this stuff away. And then the hauler then forwards them the bill that we gave them for the disposal. And they say, hey, isn't this supposed to be free? And it is until you put a middleman in the middle of that for business. So we're working through that kind of gray area with KDHE and what we're going to do with it moving forward. But suffice it to say, at this point, we have decided that that is business waste. And the business will be subject to a charge for the disposal of that waste. We assisted Riley County Clerk's Office in the delivery of the voting machines for training yesterday. And then of course, we will be as always assisting them with the upcoming elections. Then also I am still serving on the Barton County Community Call and Hazardous Waste Material Advisory Committee. Say that 10 times real fast. And that meeting will be in October. And then lastly, a couple of things that I haven't put on there, but I'll probably give you the commissioners an update on the Bala property. As you recall, we had quite a mess up there. All the hazardous materials have been removed from that property. They have been sent away for incineration. And we're just waiting for the final bill from Clean Harbors on the cost of the incineration. Total cleanup cost on, for my side, is going to be about 9,000 total. And we had estimated just short of 14,000 originally. So we're going to be way under budget on that. But we do have it fenced off. We've got the ground cleaned up. And perhaps I'll, next staff update, I'll get some photographs from you and let you know where we are on that. I think the final thing we're going to do is in cooperation with Public Works here in the fall, we're going to burn the remaining trees that we took down, some of the dead trees and stuff. And then at that point, the ground is over several acres. So it's not subject to mowing regulations, that sort of thing. So it can go to a natural ground. We've got the fencing up. So if people won't dump any stuff on there anymore. And then moving forward, the commission can kind of decide what they'd like to do with that ground. But for now, the problem has been solved. But I'll give you a further update on that.
Many acres.
You know, that's a good question. I think it's right at four and a half or five acres roughly. And it, it would not necessarily be good fertile crop ground or something. There's going to be a lot of concrete and debris in the ground. It's, it's, it's really use is going to be somewhat limited moving forward. And I think Jacob and I have discussed a little bit that that would be something the commission would, would decide. And maybe we'll deal with it moving forward. But suffice it to say now, we've solved the problem. The fence is up. We've got time to make any decision. We don't have any more pending problems up there at this point. So I'm grateful for that. And then finally, we do have some ground that we leased that we got from FEMA back in 1993 during the flood. And Jacob and I are working on maybe updating some of the leases on that. And due to some deaths of some leases we've had in the past, we're going to need to open those back up. And I will be coming in front of the commission, explaining what that process has been in the past, what the changes may be. And then updating some land leases moving forward. So just a little foreshadowing of why I might be showing back up in front of everybody here soon. But with that, that is the staff update for the Noxious Weed Department. Welcome. Any questions anybody may have about ceresa lespediza or nothing else? Okay. All right. I'm grateful for your time this morning. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Anna Burson for Riley County Appraiser's Office, here to give you the monthly staff update. Start like we usually do on our ag use side of things, our ag appraisers, processing sales, approximately 36 sales involving agricultural land. To date, there have been 11 farm home sites. The regular, regularly reviewing agricultural use and processing changes from the properties, again, that didn't return ag maps. Annual review inspections of ag land have been completed. The agricultural appraisers also assisting with sales review of our rural residential properties. Our appraisal support team is preparing for recertification of personal property tax rule to the clerk. Initial values were certified prior to June 1st, as required by statute. The secondary certification is completed in October and it provides the most up to date personal property evaluations by incorporating any additions and abatements that occurred after that certification. So this will be completed next week. We're processing changes to personal property records as they're received. They're managing the work, the residential work files relating to our annual review sales and building permits and reviewing entry of our field appraisers, ensuring accurate and complete data entry. They're also preparing for those legislative changes as it pertains to personal property. On the residential side, there's been 756 residential sales to date with a median sale price at 266,000. And the average sale price is 296,103 dollars. So currently the sales ratio is sitting roughly at 94%. Sales validation is our focus over these next couple of months. There are 370 new permits for 2025 with a total of 638 active permits due for review this coming month, in the coming months. Our residential team is wrapping up the last of the annual review and the remainder will be completed this week. There are 195 vacant lots due for their annual review and 62 vacant land sales to date. Those vacant land lots are being reviewed also this weekend and will be wrapped up next week. The preliminary residential trend has been completed, yielding roughly a 4% positive trend in sale prices between 24 and 25. Again, preliminary doesn't mean all values are going to go up 4%, just means the trend right now that we're seeing between 2024 and 2025 is roughly 4%. When you're looking at where, where that ratio is sitting at 94%, that means right now our values as it pertains to what they're selling for, we're about 6% below what they're selling for overall. So the commercial teams completed annual review. There are 22 commercial and exempt sales to date. Commercial team also has completed land analysis and is finalizing their quality control, processing data from tenant interviews and return income and expense questionnaires. And they've begun work on their depreciation analysis. There are 82 permits relating to the commercial properties. And the commercial team has also begun inspecting those, those properties with the permits and will be assisting again the residential team with permit inspections in the coming months. This is our BOTA update from our last update. Really the biggest thing to note is the Genesis, the two Genesis decisions were received as you guys received the abatement on that one year. The only outstanding hearings also, as you can see from years prior to 24, relate to the Walgreens case. Everything else prior to 2024 is off the books. And so we're really excited just to see that movement. On the pending exemption applications, we did receive some decisions. The Temple of Peace Church, the Board of Tax Appeals has denied that exemption. And advised basically that they could petition for reconsideration if they have documentation to support exemption. And so if you have additional questions as it pertains to that, I'd be, I can definitely provide you with some more information on that. The city of Manhattan, three of their applications that were submitted were granted. As I stated during that discussion on that tax abatement, two of those properties they've owned since 2019. Well, because they didn't submit an application until 2024, they were only eligible to receive the tax dollars paid back for 2024 and 2023. So taxes that were paid prior to that were not returned to the city. And so that's why it's so extremely important and why I've emphasized the need to fill out those exemption applications. Once that ownership is required, when acquired, when it's being used for municipal purposes. I also, that's taken quite a bit of time as it pertains to, you know, duties and responsibilities exemptions takes quite a bit of work. Processing through those applications as they're received. I did just receive the county's exemption applications that I had sent out to Jacob previously. Will be in the process of reviewing, reviewing those in the coming weeks. Other projects kind of going on in our office, again, training and quality control. There's so much training going on right now of the staff, quality control. And I am completing a lot of that quality control review, specifically as it pertains to residential. Exemption applications, questions, letters, as you're aware of, that have been sent out regarding exemptions and applications, updates to policies and procedures. Those are all things, discussions with PVD. Sometimes there's more information that they're wanting us to track because legislation is asking for more. So as the Appraisers Office, we have a very robust system that we can put a lot of information in. And historically, some things were not entered in those systems. And now it's additional responsibility that's coming down for us to add into our system. So they can quickly run reports and provide it to legislation. So as we're getting notification of, we want this information also recorded in your systems, we're doing that. Every exemption has to be in there. Those TIF districts, as they're established, we are now having to track and list in our system. And so we went back and we got one that's still active listed. Additionally, we received our mid-year ratio. We're dancing right around that 94% on residential. Commercial is a little bit different because we have so few sales. And so we're, we're looking at appealing a couple of the, the ratio decisions on those and we'll see where we end up. The IWA conference, we just got back last week. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity for Steve and I to attend this. It is always valuable with education sessions, just packed with education sessions. There's a lot of discussion on AI, but really some of the biggest things we can get from these is what are, what are people doing across the country? Across the world, how are we utilizing the latest tech? Is there areas that we can do better in? How can we use the tech we have? There's demonstrations even from Kansas appraisers on some of the tech that we have and how we aren't using it and things we can do to better utilize it. So a lot of positive, you know, relationship building with appraisers, not just in Kansas, but also across the country and even the world, because it is a international conference. That does bring people in from all over the world. And so again, thank you for that opportunity to attend the conference this year. Other than that, I mean, I stand for any questions you might have. I do want to just point out IRBs also can end up in being a property tax exemption. And so there was a public notice in the paper as it pertains to the Little Kitten project and IRBs that will be issued. One thing to know about IRBs is they require annual recertification. So every IRB that's issued that involves a property tax abatement essentially, we have to have recertified annually. We have to review those documents. It has to be submitted by the city and then we have to submit them to our clerk's office. And so as an FYI, again, it just, it shifts that burden, the tax burden to the other property owners paying the taxes. So the more, the more tax abatements and more exemptions, all of that, that continues to occur, just continues to shift the burden of that tax to the property owners. And so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that public hearing notice that went out on industrial revenue bonds. Any other questions?
It may be changing though.
Yeah. Okay.
States realizing they're spending a lot of tax dollars on exemptions for housing. They're well over a billion dollars right now. So I have a feeling that upcoming legislative session, that's going to be an area of focus and there's going to be some changes made. I don't know what they are. I just.
Just seen a lot more of it here in the last year, six months. And so that's just one of those things that when you, in this position, you constantly hear as the appraiser, you're, you're raising my taxes. The appraiser is responsible for ensuring the valuations are based on market. The valuations go up because of the market, high demand, low supply. But the taxes is a totally different piece of it. And, and that is the taxing authorities, not the appraiser's office. You know, we're following the market. We're following the sales. Everything else comes down to that tax burden. You know, those budgets have to be paid and the more and more that gets exempt, the more and more it's shifting the burden to the property owners. And so that's, that's just what gets missed frequently, unfortunately misrepresented. that's, that's just what gets missed frequently, unfortunately misrepresented publicly. Um, it's, uh, the appraisals are not the issue. The tax is the issue and that's where property owners are feeling it. So. Do you have any other questions for me? It was a six point five million dollars IRB.
Keep in mind, there's a sales tax in place, ten percent of which is supposed to cover city housing, which isn't being used.
So, again, just, just wanted to make sure you were aware because that looks to be specifically related to that previous uh, RHID, uh, discussion that, uh, came up. So.
So those are only for a year exemption?
They're ten year. It's a ten year IRB. Every year, yeah, every year, every IRB has to be recertified that, that has that property tax exemption. Um, it has to be submitted. I have to send it to the board, um, and then they have to recertify annually. If they miss the recertification period, there's no wiggle room. It goes back on the tax roll. Which is why, for the most part, those property owners that have IRBs or the city who typically processes those is getting that information to us prior to the deadline.
Just a question that we're, when it comes to IRBs and tax, it it's important all to the investment made. Uh, usually there's a ceiling of tax, maybe tax property made sixty percent. That's typical of, uh, the way they are a lot ago. But you have to have a policy in place, uh, if you're giving QIRBs, which have to be approved. Um, so, you know, I know the city in Manhattan has, um, had one that is sometimes, you know, I wanna say plus the max amount, sixty percent. So.
So it's still a pain.
Yeah, they would, they would still be very fortunate.
I haven't seen one on residential come through yet. The ones that I've seen are like the Edge District Building and some of the other ones. And so that value that, the appraised value in the prior years where things got locked in and then all of the rest of it is part of that abatement. I don't know how these others are working, um, but, yeah, can't speak to that side of it. It's just, uh, work through those applications as they come through. Anything else? Any suggestions?
All right. Good morning again, commissioners, um, Scott Ellerman, Public Works. And this morning I'm bringing to you a, um, proposal or contract for the BBN Architects for the Judicial Services Center Assessment Needs Study, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, when you include it in your packet, this copy of the proposal, um, in, uh, the terms that we kinda, the scope of what we, we talked with about, to them about doing and then their, not to exceed cost of a hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um, and then the back of the proposal is the fee schedules. So we can have an idea of what they're charging. They'd be charged by an hour up to that.
Saying there are site visits, that says apartment request. Does that mean it would go up? Because we have requested to go to do site visits and so I'm just wondering if the cost is gonna go up based on.
I think there's three of them were built into the proposal.
Is there? Okay. I didn't know why I was saying.
Makes sense. We, we are already established amount? Yeah, we had eighty, oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so this is, just kinda blew out my guesstimate. And so I'm gonna have, I'll come back with a, an amendment
Okay.
to that CIP request.
Go ahead. Your chance a little bit higher than that, huh?
Yeah, we'll probably have the same problem with the Health Department.
I guess we discussed it. We, we thought it might be on the low end, so.
Yeah, I used to, we, we thought that's gonna be, it said, you know. Yeah, this, this low, now I'm seeing the Health Department's gonna be low and my, um, IT remodel is gonna be low. You got a little bit of something. We have no good for it yet. We gotta, we'll have enough to do the designs.
Now, on this one, there's, there's, it's gonna be a steep hill to get done, so all the way through, but we need to know where we're at for sure. So, it is what it is.
Where is our P D M, Christian Church property? Is that, should go with injunctions or just?
Uh, I mean, it's not necessary. Again, that RFP for the Christian Church is for civic use, ideal purposes. It's true, that they need, uh, outside entities have interest in utilizing that property. Uh, so while it is similar order to you, it's not necessary that it be the same. Um, again, that, that is a particular project I handed over to us on, so. And I, and again, uh, it should be going now, uh, when that.
Yeah, was that what you're saying? Are they gonna analyze sites? Because that would be.
Part of this is to analyze the, the church site, um, just to kind of.
Well, we definitely need to know the what involved in this. The wearers can probably have to come out later time where to go with it.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully that's the spot, but.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not too optimistic on that.
And we still, and, and on the first Christian church, we have received new meetings in the world field. Um, so we still cannot know, uh, where that may, um, now with, or I mean, was back in March, March.
Arizona, there was several entities interested in, I think, going to be part of the, 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 like, but the. Just question.
Happy evening.
And I'll go and make a motion to approve the proposal from BBN for a hundred and ninety-four thousand for the judicial services needs assessment.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second to approve the proposal from BBN for a hundred and ninety-four thousand for the judicial service needs assessment. All in favor?
Thank you.
We're still doing, doing, and are we still doing the tour?
Second.
Are we still doing the tour of the Health Department after this? That's eleven today.
It's for consultants.
Oh, I thought we were all gonna tour. I had it in my calendar that we're gonna tour it, but it's not for us.
No, that would be part of that, it is a selection. That's why you weren't talking.
Oh, okay. All right.
We're doing the consultant, the tour of all of the buildings so they can turn in their RFPs.
Um, I never got anything on them because Commissioner Paul, he was on the.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. I was just kinda, didn't see it. So I didn't.
You heard it twice in a year.
I went, I didn't expect to know the rest of the, um, and I, it only happened to be a report.
Well, yeah, there's parts of the Health Department I haven't seen.
Probably. They only part that.
Well, the, well, we're the kinds of health was, we're the fire department. I've never been in all those offices. So that part of it, but the rest of them. Be good then.
Yes, she's, yeah. Lauren says, the, I want to celebrate something that we didn't take wrong.
We started to run the ball again.
Yeah.
See, yeah, yeah. You have a forty-five yard touchdown. We didn't do, do good this year. Offensive line is playing pretty good.
That's a major interest.
No.
I think that's, I'm just banged up a little bit, though.
Sure.
I know. What happens is you play every down on both sides of the ball.
Good morning, Commissioners, Amanda Webb, Planning Director. I'm here with Planning and Development's, um, monthly staff update. I am, even though it's listed first, Keats, I'm gonna stray from tradition and we're gonna leave that one actually till the last because there's a few highlights I wanna, um, make sure we cover and then we'll get back to Keats because there's a couple of things we need to talk about, so. Cause there's a few highlights I wanna um, make sure we cover and then we'll get back to Keats, cause there's a couple of things we need to talk about, so. Um, so jumping ahead, um, comprehensive plan update, thank you for the work session earlier this week, that was very helpful. Um, as we talked about, our consultant is taking that input. Um, Bob and I went through our current plan and gave them some input. Um, and they're working on um, a draft for us that will be available in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then everything's just gonna be kinda going a little fast, but we'll, we'll get it out there and we'll get comments and um, get that updated. So we can stay on track to get that done by the end of the year, so um. That's all going ahead, um. Let's see, a couple of things to mention. I want to make sure to um, give a humongous shout out to Darren Hobbs, who worked very, very hard on our five-year recertification for the community rating system. It was a, and Commissioner McKinley knows, there was a lot of back and forth, it was extra difficult, it seemed this year. There were several um, of our, of our communities around Kansas that actually dropped out because of how difficult it was to recertify this year. Um, Darren hung, hung in there, um, and I am happy to say he got it done. Um, and we will retain our class nine certification um, for Riley County. What that equates to is a five percent um, uh, flood insurance premium discount for those in our community that, that need that. So it does translate to something tangible and meaningful for our community. So again, just wanna give him a lot of, a lot of props for as much work as that was, it was very difficult. Um, I was in a lot of those calls and conversations and it was pretty rigorous and again, that, that others had had to drop out because of how difficult it was, that's just a testament to. Um, he worked really hard for that, so just wanted to make sure to announce that, both, both so people are aware, we're keeping the class nine, so their insurance premium deduction will remain. Um, and that we were able to do that, so. Um, couple other items, short-term rental regulation amendments, as we've been working on forever. Um, that will go to public hearing um, with both of our planning boards this coming month. Um, so we were able to come up with some of the agreed-upon language, proposed language, um, that you folks workshop earlier this year. Um, so we'll have those uh, public hearings October twentieth for the Riley County Planning Board, and actually November fourth for Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board, of course, it's gotta go to both boards. And then it'll be back before you folks for um, final approval. Um, so I've been working on that. Let's see. Um, the LEPP grant, the Local Environmental Protection Program grant through KDHE. Um, as you know, we were awarded that for twenty twenty-five. We've expended all of that, that's all closed, everything's finalized. They are still working on their end for twenty twenty-six. Um, we did get approved for it, um, as I've said, but they have been kind of bogged down. Um, kind of behind the scenes while they do their concurrency, their legal team looks over things. Um, she mentioned they might have some modification with their grant agreement terms, so they're still working on it on their end, it has been awarded. We just can't, of course, get the funds until they've settled things on their side, we sign the grant agreement to get the money, so. Um, just wanted to give an update that that's still out there, we still have a couple of folks that we've been communicating with. Um, as we identified from the first round that we can assist. We're just kinda waiting for um, them to do their piece and for us to officially be released the money, so hopefully soon, but I'll keep you posted on that. Um. The other thing, and I know we talked about it a little bit, strategic planning. We're gonna have our session um, at um, at Employee Day, it's an all, all-employee session that we'll have, just giving everybody an update. Um, an overall on what or an overview, what strategic planning is itself. What process Riley County went through, how we came up with the plan, where, where everything came from to put that plan together. And then we'll also have more specifics about what we've done over the last few years. Not just specific to this new plan, cause we do have to remember, we did have one before. Um, and that, like, the EMS headquarters and everything was identified through that, so we just wanna make sure we talk about what has been done over the last several years, kinda where we are now and some of our next steps on that, so. Um, been working with Grant and Molly at Shockey Consulting, there are consultants that have been with us this whole time. Um, so they will be there to help us with that presentation, we have several county staff on that panel. Um, so we're all really excited for that, um, to get that information out to all the employees, so. Um, and the other piece of that, of course, since it's been about a year since that was completed, um, we're kind of working on our annual review of the plan um, with Shockey's help as well. They're kind of working on a tracking report, if you will. Um, kind of to be able to, again, do just that, track what's been done either in a given quarter or a given six months or annually, however we wanna define that. So we can say, okay, in this quarter, we did X, Y, and Z towards this priority. Um, what's coming next, that kind of thing, to keep you folks informed, to keep all employees informed. Um, so that's a piece that they are working on, so you'll be seeing um, a draft of that soon. So things are going along well with that. And. Alright, so unless you have any questions about any of that or anything else, we can go back to Keats now. If we're ready. Okay, so with Keats, um, we've been working on obtaining um, easements from all property owners for a while. Um, we've sent, we, and we have received a good amount of them, people have been really um, good to work with and asking questions or you know, get, getting the documents to us. Um, I did send out another handful of letters, kind of a second notification or reminder, if you will, earlier this week, sent certified letters out to folks we haven't heard from. Um, you know, giving them, October tenth is their um, new deadline to give us their temporary easements. Um, a few of them still need permanent easements, most of them, what we're waiting for are temporary easements. If you recall, everybody needs a temporary easement because we need to be able to access everybody's property to de, decommission their existing septic tank or wastewater infrastructure and then connect to the system, so everybody needs a temporary, a handful need um, permanence. And we've gotten a variety of both from people. So there's a few others that we're still working with um, to get, again, to get the permanent easement, some people wanted a little bit of language changes in terms of like fence replacement, things like that, no big deal, we've been able to do that, so. Um, well, we're gonna have this next push, and then if we don't hear, Commissioner Fokie has volunteered to go knocking door to door and help, help coordinate anything we haven't um, received, and, and the other important thing, and, and we've tried to convey to folks, we'll come to them. You know, if, if they don't have time to come to us, or how do I find a notary, or what do I do? We will come to them, you know, we really just need people to contact us, contact Jacob, contact me. We will coordinate, we will bring the document and a notary to you. We have, of course, you folks know, we have plenty in the county, so we can, we can come meet, meet people at their house, at, you know, a location that works for them, so. We wanna make this as easy as possible for folks to get this done, so. So we're still working on that. Um, the other piece um, I want to talk about and get your input on is um, temporary fencing. So as part of the project, anybody who has an existing fence on site that's going to be kind of in the way, you will, um, that will need to be removed in order to access the system or access the area where they need to run the new lines. That fencing will be removed, but then it will be replaced. And that's all part of, that's all part of the scope at this point, that's all factored in. Um, we've had a few folks ask about temporary fencing. Maybe they have dogs, they have some other reason why they have concern that their fence will be removed, if you will, for a few days. Um, in terms of, kind of a quick side note, in terms of schedule. Um, the contractor and BG will have um, a schedule kind of a week to week, and they'll be able to notify about a week or two ahead of time, if everything goes accordingly. You know, as you, as you know, you know, things, things can happen. Um, but they'll have a schedule, you know, this week, we're gonna do these properties, this week, we're gonna do this. And there'll be a schedule and we'll keep people informed, again, at least a week in advance, hey, next Wednesday through Friday, expect X. Um, again, obviously, if something happens, we'll keep people informed the best we can, so it's not really going to be a situation where all of a sudden they're gonna look out their window and somebody's on their site, taking down their fence and they had no idea. So, um, so there is ways to kind of coordinate and kind of schedule some of this, so. And in theory, provided there's not random or unforeseen delays. Really, they're only needing to be on people's sites probably a few days at a time, unless it's a more challenging site. Um, so again, so kinda back to the temporary fencing question. That hasn't necessarily been factored in yet, but we wanted to talk about if that, if you folks foresee that as part of the fencing kind of scope, if you will. Um, we talked to BG in terms of what would be the cost and kind of the difficulties, not the right word, but the procedure um, for doing this, um, he estimated somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred fifty dollars per you know, home or property or whatnot. So if we say seven hundred fifty dollars and if we say every single property in the district wants temporary fencing, that cost would be just under fifty thousand, just shy of fifty thousand, about forty-eight thousand seven fifty in that neighborhood. That's not included in the cost right now. So we wanted to, Jacob and I talked about this yesterday, if there's anything you wanna add, please. Um, but we wanted to talk to you folks about if you see temporary fencing for those who would need it or request it or whatnot, if you would see that as being part of the fencing scope in the project, knowing that it would, again, we're assuming every single property wanted it and, and it would be the max cost that Sam estimated, that's what that just shy of fifty thousand is. But we wanted to get your input, if that's something you want to consider.
This is this movie for like keeping dogs, you know.
Right, we, we have. Well, we, we had a couple of folks ask, hey, I have, I have dogs, if we're, and I have a fenced backyard, and if I don't have a fence, I can't just let my dogs out. Um, so that's kinda where it came from, you know, just kinda that, that question of is there a way to do temporary fencing, what, what can we do about my animals while, you know, while you have my fence down for a few days?
A lot of them.
Yes, I'm not sure. Well, it would be, again, per property. Yeah, so if, so if somebody says, hey, you took my fence down, I have animals, can I get a temporary fence? I guess I would envision it would kinda be in that same rough area where they have their existing fence. They would get it put up while the work is being done and then taken down, and then the regular fence would be put back up.
And you're saying follow, but all of them don't even have fences.
Right, yeah, yeah, so I just kinda wanted to give a worst-case scenario, if like every single property wanted it. Although, yeah, and I mean, that could be something we've talked about, if you don't have an existing.
You know, if, if if it's just, they don't wanna for it convenience. Would care hurt, but you know, I mean, it isn't, but you know, have, but again, it's only be two or three days. You don't get the dogs out today or you tie them up or something else. Those, it's, same as your kid, you can tie them up.
Right.
Well, that's kind of, well, if there were dogs out that are out all the time and protect the property, that might be a problem, that might be a problem to check out people too, but you know, if it's just a convenience. I mean, that's something that we need to do, try and, what do you think? Is that because they're a legal thing that we're?
I mean, at this point, uh, the duty of providing, for the same, I would say, we, we don't have the duty to provide. This is for you guys as specifically the governing body of that super district.
Cause you get made.
The district. They're gonna be paying. Alright, um, it's not necessarily the account.
But that's, but we're still trying to keep their costs.
Right, exactly, um, and so you know, I, I have a feeling that if we do move to allow temporary fencing, it is kind of a thing of, well, uh, we don't wanna find ourselves in a game of, with our, I mean, really, who is deserving of that temporary fencing and who is not, I um, if we're gonna allow it, it should probably be those who ask. Uh, so more, uh, feel that they need one. Cause I would just be worried about, wow, we'll be about.
Has anybody asked?
Had a couple, yeah, a couple of people.
Yeah, that one, so it's likely that, and it's likely that this probably significantly less. But just, you know, if we wanna provide a ceiling, an absolute ceiling, this would not be anyone's, it's likely to be much less. But, there's such ones.
So we would put a budget amount in, fundamentally, budget for the tax.
Be kind of like a not to exceed, you know, this max amount, basically. But like Jacob said, it's likely to be much, much, much less. This was kind of a worst case, if it was the full amount that Sam estimated and every single property owner was asking for it, and again, we've had one or two people ask, so.
Fences pre-expenses.
It's the labor and the materials, it's, you know, the people to actually put it up and the other materials itself and then take it down. Yeah, that's all of it, so.
We said maximum, I'd look, at least let's see even how many fences there are, how many, you know. Cause most of those, I don't think have fences.
Yeah, a lot of them don't.
More than can you can. Oh, we have, you go door to door and get kinda looked at all.
You can probably see on GIS, a lot of it, so, yeah.
Engineers have been back and forth down those streets and ask they know which ones.
Yeah, and actually, that's a good point, cause they do, as I mentioned earlier, they do already indicate in the materials what fencing needs to be removed and then replaced, and that's all already part of the scope, so I can just look at that.
You could look at that, just how many, how many there's even possibilities.
Yep, I absolutely can do that.
Of course, always establish something.
Take pictures now, so we can ask them back to you.
Yeah.
Where the face is too high, yeah.
So I can get that information and bring it back to you folks and we can go from there. That sounds old.
Yeah.
Anything more with Keats? I know I'm over my time, but anything else with Keats? Thank you. So.
Thank you. Okay.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I made a motion that recesses the Board of County Commission and convenes the Board of County Health.
Moved in second to recess in the Board of County Commissioners and convenes the County Board of Health, all in favor?
Alright, good morning, uh, Caitlin Spethwick Supervisor. Uh, so I'm here with Diane and Brittany to talk about um, WIC and what the potential impacts may be for the WIC program during the federal government shutdown. Um, so I've prepared a, a packet for you, um. Pretty much background, WIC is a discretionary program under the USDA. And the state of, states receive their funding quarterly um, from the USDA. So the nutrition services and administrative part of the grant, it's about twenty-five percent of the federal WIC grant goes to the local agencies to run that administrative cost, and that's what we see here at the, the local level. And then seventy-five percent of those grant funds are for the food grant, um, that's administered at the state level. And so because WIC is a discretionary program, it does not receive any funding, new funding during a shutdown. Yesterday, October first, local agencies received communication from the Director of Bureau of Family Health at KDHE. So the letter is attached, um, that third, third page there. Um, of importance, it says that KDHE will plan to continue state and local WIC operations as is until funds are depleted. Monitor the availability of food funds daily, encourage local agencies to avoid frivolous spending and just using client and staff time efficiently. KDHE estimates that. KDHE estimates that based off of current available funding, local WIC operations will maintain for approximately ten to eleven calendar days. So we will continue providing updates during those ten to eleven days on what we're getting from KDHE and USDA. Wanted to talk about the community impact. Any disruption to WIC services, it will be huge for Riley County and surrounding areas. The Riley County WIC program serves women pregnant through six to twelve months postpartum, infants and children up to the age of five. So I've included our caseload numbers here for you. At Fort Riley, we're seeing one thousand three hundred and seventy seven individual clients. Manhattan, Riley County, we have one thousand two hundred and fifty five and then one hundred and eleven in Fox County. So our total participating caseload is two thousand seven hundred and forty three clients. And I broke that down by category. So we have six hundred and seventy six women participating in our program. Of those, two hundred and sixty one are pregnant. We have five hundred and seventy two infants on our program receiving benefits. We have one thousand four hundred and ninety five children on our program. And we have just continued to see a steady increase in our caseload, too. I've included our percent change in our caseload from fiscal year twenty four to fiscal year twenty five. And for April, May and June, we had a four to seven percent caseload increase compared to the state. State saw a one to three percent increase. Our WIC participants receive around eight hundred dollars per year in healthy foods, nutrition education from registered dieticians, breastfeeding education and support from credential lactation professionals and connection to other community resources. And WIC is just one of the many programs that impact food security in our community. Some information from the Flint Hills Bread Basket, they served over six hundred households each week in August and over seven hundred each week in September. There is the Food and Farm Council Food and Security Community Action Team that meets monthly to address hunger in our community in the breadbasket. Has a, has a huge role in that. And Riley County is the only county in Kansas to be identified by the US Census Bureau where people are living in persistent poverty, which is poverty over twenty percent or more for the past thirty years. And so WIC, with, with the infusion of those, those healthy foods, it, it just helps our families be able to, to feed their families, not have to worry as much. So any disruption or, or thought of a disruption in services can really impact our family's health and our community's health. And then Brittany is here to talk about the fiscal impact. She projected out some numbers of what we're seeing.
Thank you. Morning Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer. So in that packet Caitlin gave you, I projected out expenditures through, for the rest of October, November and December. Just their rough estimates. October, we do have three pay periods this month. So if you're wondering why salaries are a little bit higher, that is why. So I just wanted to draw attention to that. Right now, we're just really trying to figure out what we need to do for WIC. One thing I really want to point out, and you may be aware, but just in case the public isn't, like the WIC, like the SNAP benefits and stuff, that's not something that we control. So that's not something, I mean, I would love to say that we could definitely help with that, but that's unfortunately not, not the case. And so just really, we're going to meet this afternoon to kind of talk about staffing and stuff like that and figure out what we need to do, especially with, you know, the ten to eleven calendar days that the state has. And then we're going to come back to you guys maybe with a plan, hopefully. But really, we're just going to continue operations until we hear more from the state and then we'll have meeting this afternoon to discuss, you know, maybe next steps. On what do we do with staff or anything like that if they have to, if the state runs out of funds, so.
What we're going to cover from, through the end of December with the county.
So it was going to be covered through the end of their federal fiscal years, which ended September thirtieth. So I actually called Diane this morning just to try and figure out like, okay, how much did we actually cover? What was our cash balance? And they ended up not covering near as much as we originally anticipated. So I didn't project those numbers out because it, it really wasn't a huge impact to our cash balance at the Health Department. What I think is a little sticky is federal versus like what we can do, right? So I think like, yes, we have the cash and we could cover this, but legally, like, what are we allowed, allowed to do? So we're bringing Jacob into the meeting this afternoon to, or getting his opinion and working with him to figure out how we can keep going. Because there may be the possibility of maybe we can cover it financially and then we don't get reimbursed. So that may be something we have to discuss, work through, figure out the legal obligations of that, so.
It's most of the time they're going to shut down, even when they do kick back in, they back. But that's, I'm not going to guess what Washington will do.
Right. Yeah, agreed. And to, I wish Elizabeth was here, but she had to leave for a doctor's appointment. So her point is that we're hearing not necessarily furlough, we're hearing the president and the administration saying we're going to fire people. We are, we're not going to back pay them. This is, and so that's something that we're trying to take into consideration. I mean, you know, you have to kind of take everything at face value and don't know what's going to happen from there, but.
That's big loss to you, too, with union service.
Oh, sure, sure.
A little bit on I believe somewhere in twenty nineteen, there was a law that was passed that would require Congress to pay back money on any fraudulent to capture the specific situation, though, is does our employees, oh, where do they fall under the classification? And so that's going to be some of, some of the questions on, well, if we do want to, you know, step in and if we can step in, what, you know, are we going to be reverse or not? There's quite a few questions out there, just trying to figure out.
We've been down this road before, haven't we?
So in twenty eighteen, with the thirty one or thirty five day shutdown, I think Kansas had enough reserves to cover. So I, I was not the supervisor at that time, but I, I could go back and, and.
Go back and look back to the hundred thousand other times the government has shut down. Maybe there's, you know, maybe there's some ideas in there that will, that will help. I know each situation's different, obviously, but maybe there were some things that were done that are still applicable, but.
Yeah, I can go back and look at those records.
I know February of twenty, it shut down for something similar, so.
I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I, I think the issue is that this is happening at the beginning of a federal year. So the state has not already received their quarter.
And don't know what it's going to be at this point in time.
Right.
They have no resolution in place.
Yeah.
After mid, federal government actually passes a yearly budget like everybody else does.
So then when it shut down in February for a couple of days, they had enough cash on hand to cover through that shutdown.
Well, what's happening with your move from Fort Riley?
I have not heard anything directly from Fort Riley about the impact of our move with the government shutdown. We are moving forward as, as planned. We have our sponsorship.
Had discussion yesterday, Military Relations Committee. We were talking to Congressman Schmidt. IAC is actually planning a meeting tomorrow to bear at what they're doing with their services and stuff. So actually, this move is actually, with this involved, is actually probably better, we're doing it the way we're doing it than actually being there because they would have probably eliminated each other.
Yeah, well, they didn't, they haven't, I don't know what you said yesterday, but they had not signed that. So, you know, but there's for them too, so.
Well, the bill, the bill for that passed the House, it's still sitting in Senate and they can still do some non-discretionary things and pass some things and that's one. Or my dog. They're that committee is not, non-tax. So it's not tax or appropriation. So they could still technically meet and pass legislation, but there's still no appropriation. So I still don't know how they get that through, so. They'll eventually get back as discussed, but I don't, they're, they're five votes short of this, the super majority there, so. And they have the filibuster in place, so it has to be sixty votes in the Senate.
Well, I was just kind of wondering.
Yeah, and I will come back and provide some more information as I get it about the move, too.
Now, that's the thing about the luncheon yesterday, there was hardly anybody from Fort Riley there. It's usually a good mixture of, you know, civilian and, and, and Ford, and that wasn't the case yesterday. It was kind of weird.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But we're just trying to get the ball with, I know Caitlin's been on this for a while and then they brought this into the conversation yesterday. When we knew for sure the shutdown was happening, there's been little that communicated from the state.
So there's learning on the fly probably too. I, I'm of the thought this is going to last a while.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Well, past that ten, two week period, it's going to last.
The thing is that I will keep repeating this, ten to eleven calendar days, like this in state.
Right.
And there's a difference. So that's something we'll talk about this afternoon, but we'll have to take that into consideration as well.
What events? Okay.
Another question? I'm sure it has the answers, but. Thank you.
I don't know how much we're going to accomplish at A B S A this year either. But anyway, with that said, I'll make a motion that recesses the Board of County Health and reconvenes the Board of County Commission.
And moved in second to recesses the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, all in favor?
No, it can't be started twenty seven already.
You're telling me.
That's not right.
But we.
Apparently had enough to digest twenty six.
Yeah. Yeah, me too. It's not like next year's budget season is going to be any better, right? So.
Yeah. That's fine.
She's, she's.
Oh, you're.
That's okay.
It's going to run over you.
Yeah.
We really don't want to talk about.
Yeah. Never been so dismissed.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to present the state fiscal year twenty seven grant budget calendar. So this is not something we have actually ever done before. We've always established like our regular calendar year budget for all departments to follow. But we haven't really had a grant budget calendar. And then at the last minute, we're rushing and trying to get everything done. So this year I decided maybe it would be better if we actually put a calendar together for our departments that have these grant budgets that fall within this year. And then we have real deadlines and looking at this for months that versus, okay, we're in this last month, now we really got to get it done. So this is what it looks like. Same layout as the one that we do for our calendar year, just very condensed. One thing that's kind of tricky here is estimating the CPIU because we don't get, you know, it's not quick, it's not, you know, December first, we get, you know, November numbers. It's usually middle, middle of the next month that we get them, if that, sometimes it's a little later. And so last year, when we were helping Raising Riley project their budget, we did estimate December and we were right on. So that worked out. But this is just a little bit backwards than how we would normally do things. So normally, we would have department heads review their personnel and do that first, and then I would have them work on their budget and expense reports. This way, we're doing it the other way around. So we'll do budget and expense reports first. And then we'll do payroll once we get closer to the end of the year and can establish what that CPIU would be. Now, we do project the budgets and submit the budgets with the CPIU included. Understanding that you may not approve it. It's contingent on, you know, final approval through the actual budget process. But because we want to ask for the full amount of money, we want to make sure we have that built in, so. Little bit different. New, wasn't sure if you guys had a baseline like we do for our regular calendar year. I know we've talked about like CCL already, like what we're going to do there for this next fiscal year. Any other things that you want us to take into consideration?
Give us a list of what all, or is that what you're working? Then on here somewhere, when you give, you compile a list of what all we get, what all the grants is.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
You know, to see, yeah, we beat it. And then you say March, is that when the deadline is for all state grants or just?
It's March fifteenth.
Okay.
So that would give us some wiggle room on if like you guys, you know, weren't happy and wanted us to change something, we wouldn't be bringing it to you the last second. Is that, we know that's something we've heard you guys say a lot, stop bringing us stuff last second. And so this is really holding those departments accountable to not, not do that anymore, so.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to see the list of what all.
Yeah.
I know we have grants, some are federal, some are state.
Sure.
You know.
Sure. Yes, and so, so with the private ones, I didn't include that in this list, right? Because all I'm thinking about, mainly, I'm thinking about two departments, Health Department and Community Corrections. Almost all of them, except for Raising Riley, are federal grants that flow through the state. But they're on the state fiscal year now, except for WIC as well, right? So WIC is on a federal fiscal year, October one through September thirtieth. Everyone else in the Health Department is July first through June thirtieth. And then Community Corrections follows that same timeline as well. So yes, I can definitely get you a list of all of those, but I didn't include, you know, those private grants like the, yeah, Caroline Pan, stuff like that.
Data Man, Community Foundation.
Yes, yeah, or like the alcohol grant applications that, those are smaller ones that follow a different timeline. This is just for our operating grants is my thought process on creating this. But I, I'm more than happy to send a list out to all of you of all the different grants that we get that would follow this timeline.
Have you talked to, has cleared the, all the capital, capital.
So typically, that is not the process for even our calendar, regular calendar that we do. We don't typically send this to the department heads for review. We don't typically send this to, um, the department heads for review, more than happy to do so.
This is a new thing.
Yes.
Think there may be.
And I did, um, collaborate.
Yeah, she did have to send it out to review.
Yes, I did collaborate with Diane, um, more specifically on this because, um, because Raising Riley is different, right? Thursdays due like that first week of January, and so, or maybe the second week. So I did ask her, her opinion on, you know, would you be okay with receiving your budgets first versus, you know, your payroll? And then you add the payroll in later. So, I mean, I did reach out, collaborate, um, but they haven't seen this draft. But that's also not abnormal from our normal process.
It's new, in concept, basically.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, the plan, you know, getting sense of.
Yeah.
But see then.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it too, because the, most people call me in February and they're like, hey, I need you. And then I'm running ten different directions.
Well, you're in the middle of your own version.
Yeah, exactly. Do you want me to send this to the department heads to review, or at least mainly it'd be Diane and Megan, and then bring it back to you guys?
I'm, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I think ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of those grants are those two that you've already collaborated with, and I.
Yes.
I don't see us having to overdo that.
Yeah, and Diane actually already, um, asked me for her budgets, so. Um, I haven't sent them yet because I, I did tell her, you know, I plan to follow this timeline, um, and work with them accordingly, so. Sound good? I'll send you guys a list of the grants, um, baseline. Did you guys have anything you wanted to establish as a baseline the past few years, just for like regular grant, uh, not regular grants, I'm sorry, regular budgets to then, just to keep in mind of the sentiment, but there's, there are tax dollars involved in this. Um, it's just not, not something that we can, I guess, really establish this early on of how much tax dollars would be in that.
You need to make a motion.
Um, yes, I have a motion to approve the grant budget calendar.
Uh, I made a motion to approve the, um, fiscal year twenty-seven grant budget calendar as presented.
And moved in second to approve the, uh, state fiscal year twenty-seven grant budget calendar as presented in favor.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Ready?
Yeah.
Morning again, John Allerman, Public Works. Um, I have in front of you a change order for the elevator project. This was to, to allow TK Elevator, TK to shorten the, the project time for the courthouse project. Typical projects were three to four weeks. To do the upgrades to the elevators, this was allow them to do the overtime and condense that to seven to ten days. That elevator in the courthouse, especially of us told yesterday that jury trials from here to the end of the year every week, so I think we have an October twenty-second date. And if we can get in there and do that in those seven to ten days, we might not disrupt courts too much.
Will they work over the weekends then?
I think it's a Wednesday through Wednesday, the next week, yes.
Okay.
We kind of knew that ahead of time, I mean, earlier than, I think you kind of approved and located.
Yeah.
When we presented their project numbers, but this is now the change order to actually tell TK that they can do that.
I'm going to move to approve the change order for the elevator modernization of twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars.
I would second that.
Been moved instead to approve the change order for elevator modification project of twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars. All say. Thank you very much.
We do have one, yeah, one of the, one of the number, I have to have Cindy writing down. Got to be predictions.
Richard.
Okay.
For the meeting started.
I guess we'll hear about it on Monday or whenever, so. Um, I think Baylor's pretty good. We don't play pretty well against them in WIC, so. Six and a half is the spread in favor of Baylor. He should get a three-point difference from being at home, but I'm going to say thirty-twenty-six Baylor.
I'm going to keep my optimist tab on thirty-five, twenty-eight, they say.
Okay, I, I think we'll squeak it out by three points. At the very end, probably. Uh, I've got K State at thirty-seven, Baylor at thirty-four.
Thirty, twenty-seven, Houston.
Grand test thirty-five, thirty-one, basically.
You can trust, they're all real close.
I hope to be wrong.
Yes.
That's what. This said, I, I, yeah, somebody's got to go against it, and so against the. I'm not completely sold, just yet. This next month's going to be tough.
I have tons of glass, I remember glasses on for this one, but not sure if it's mine, it's.
Yeah, I've got some of those with our.
I know, not all that.
Do have one more thing, the policy breakfast did get you two to one third.
Oh, okay. Okay.
On Thursday, Thursday, twenty-third, okay.
Yeah, they're having a board retreat in Kansas City on sixteen.
Yeah, I had it against.
That's when it normally is, yeah. That week of October there is going to be doozy.
Well, I would make a motion to adjourn the October second meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, second.
And moved in second to adjourn the October second, the Riley County Commission, long in favor.
I.